Thank you. Madam Poitiers, roll call first.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yeah.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mia Caulfield.
Yep.
Seven present.
Thank you. Moving on with the agenda on the special auto business. Appreciation for the service of school committee member Regina M. Tarka.
Can we just do that at the end of the meeting?
What's that?
Do it at the end of the meeting.
We have traditionally waited and conducted the business and then done that at the conclusion of the meeting.
Make a motion to...
I'm gonna make a motion to celebrate me at the end of the meeting.
I will second that motion.
You want to set the end of the meeting?
End of the meeting.
I'm only going by what's on the agenda.
Absolutely, no, absolutely. It's just, we've generally made that motion when we do it anyway.
And who seconded it?
I'm sorry. Ms. Martin.
Fine, we'll do it at the end of the meeting. Motion to accept the minutes of the last regular meeting. So moved by Dave Conway, seconded by Connie Martin. All in favor? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes have been accepted and placed on file. Permission to enter.
SPNR Transportation of New Hampshire for the amount of four hundred, four hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars to amend the existing contract that we have them for special education transportation for students involved in our special education summer school and after-school programs. That's all.
Motion to approve.
Move approval.
Move to approve by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by John Leahy. Roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Moving on with the agenda, memorials. Committee as a whole. Henry Ward, father of Maureen Wardenault, assistant principal at the Pine Arts School. Let us all rise in a moment of silence in Docking Chambers, please. Thank you, may he rest in peace. Unfinished business, appointment to the lone telecommunication board. Madam Superintendent, do you want to respond or not?
Thank you, Your Honor. At a school committee meeting a few weeks ago, we voted Jack Parnard onto that particular committee and we needed another person who would also be willing to do so, and I put forward the name of Ann Sheehy, and I need a vote of the school committee.
Move approval of Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Roll call.
Can we have it by name, please?
Move approval to support for the LTC board, Jack Parnard and Ann Sheehy.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Is there any public participation? There is none. Motions by John Leahy and Jim Leary, request the superintendent to provide the technology, subcommittee, and school committee with a plan that will allow parent access to their child's records, weekly homework assignments, grade curriculum information, communication capabilities with their child's teacher, and other general school information from an existing parent portal technology within X2. Additionally, provide a plan with the associated costs required to bring each school's website up-to-date with current useful information. Seconded by Dave Conway.
Thank you. I think we've talked about this a couple of times in the past few meetings we've had since, I think, August of this year. This is coming up again because of discussions that myself and Mr. Leahy have had together and with folks that we know in other districts throughout the country. And Mr. Leahy is a good example of a friend of his out in California that has the same usage that our X2 technology has, where a parent can enter the student code into their own home computer or even their BlackBerry, if they will, and can pull out their students' grades, their students' attendance issues, can have a direct correspondence, written correspondence that's similar to email with the specific teacher of their student. I think it's something that we need to discuss. I've talked to a lot of students because of the issues regarding the Bailey Principal out in the Highlands regarding more information being accessible, and a lot of the parents at the Bailey School would like to be the pilot of that program if we were to do something in the near future. There's something that, there's a craving for knowledge of their students' issues on a weekly basis. They want to help as opposed to get in the way of the teachers, so if a student's not doing their homework, a parent would be cognizant of that fact and would be able to make, and hold their own, you know, child accountable. I know the Sullivan School, interestingly enough, is doing something already similar to this, where they're downloading homework assignments, I don't know if it's a weekly or bi-weekly basis, but I think it would be good for the technology subcommittee to get together with any member, obviously every member of the school committee, and sit down with the folks at the Sullivan, sit down with the X2 people and all our experts to put this program in place. Parents want it, other school districts across the country are already doing it. It's something that would probably make the teachers' job easier to help educate our students. Thank you.
John, would you like to...
Sure, thank you.
...part of your motion?
Thank you. Yeah, it's, this is something that parents are coming to us now, and we've talked about it for years, and whatever the hurdles were in the past, it's time that we get this going. And so, there's a big demand from the parents, and it's time to offer this. So, if we can get a report on this and try to get going on it, I know that there's gonna be some things to work out, but I'm sure we can do it, and hopefully for next year, if we're allowed to, we'll have this up and running. Thank you.
Any other, Dave?
Just very briefly, I think it's always a good idea to get as much information into the parents' hands so that they can certainly work with each one of their children to help them out and to have communication with the teacher. The, I would have a couple of questions. What type of additional software might be needed for X2 in order to, in order to make this effective? Would anybody, the superintendent know that, or perhaps Jay Lang?
My understanding is that X2 does have that particular feature, and I'm not sure with regards to going online. I don't know, Mr. Lang, if you know anything more about that, but I do know we have the capabilities with it. It's a very powerful system.
Thank you. Within the X2 student database system which we're utilizing, there is a parent portal that's part of the package that is available to, for our use right now as part of our subscription, so there's no additional cost to software. It would just be a process of actually rolling out the implementation of that, and I would envision that being part of the report back to the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'd just like to echo, I think, a lot of what's been said, but I do think that this really could be a powerful opportunity for us. More importantly, it's gonna be a powerful opportunity for our families to get this kind of information. I think like anything else, you know, in every aspect of our district, we're trying to promote parent involvement, get our parents involved and invested, and feeling a sense of responsibility for our schools and their role in it. And I think this is one of the ways we reach out. The key for any organization, it doesn't matter what, you know, whether it's a business or a school district or a nonprofit, anything, is we need to be cognizant of the fact that we need to communicate in a multitude of different ways, 'cause we need to meet people how they come to us. And there is a significant number of parents and families in our community for whom this would be the single most effective and efficient and convenient way for them to connect with their child's educational experience here in the city of Lowell. And I think we will certainly see some roadblocks, and I think that we'll have to, you know, just even in taking advantage of what X2 can provide us with, I recognize that we're gonna have to do some work to make this happen. But I do think that it will be well worth it if we can put in place a portal that really gives parents access to this kind of, you know, real-time information that will help them in stewarding their children through their educational experience. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this, Mr. Leahy?
I just wanted to add one more thing, too. Some good points that Ms. Martin brought up is that, you know, it's a great way to communicate with our parents. I mean, I know at our household, by the time the kids get home, you get home from work and dinner and homework and showers and bed, this is something I can look at and other people at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. And then you can email back and forth, and you're updated, and it'd be terrific to have this. I mean, 'cause there's just not enough time in the day, and by the time you do get to this, it's late at night or early in the morning. So, you know, if we can make this happen, this would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? If none, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. The next motion, by John Leahy and Jim Leary, request that the superintendent conduct a comprehensive review of the student supports, school resources, and academic programs available in each school in order to provide a comparison report to the committee on effective programming models, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. On the motion, John?
Thank you. Through you to the superintendent. I was thinking about this over the last couple of weeks, and I don't want to create a lot of extra, I don't want to fix something that isn't broken, but it came to my attention that over the last few years, we've been cutting and cutting and cutting, and the previous superintendent, we kinda had a situation where we got a lot of input from the principals and we let them make choices. So basically, what I want to make sure is that the choices we've made over the last few years, that we're still heading in a positive direction, you know? We may allow, say, one school to forego a reading teacher for a technical person, but is that still the right choice for that school? You know, do we need to reassess, basically, and just make sure that we're still moving ahead in these difficult times? So, you know, you may talk to a certain principal at a certain school and say, "Well, you know, you've done without disposition for a long time, I think it's time we bring it back." So that's all. I just want to make sure that, obviously, we all want to make sure that we're just moving ahead. Thank you.
Quickly, and I just echo my colleague's statements, I think the other part of it, too, is really, I know if you go to any principal, they're gonna say, "We didn't want to cut anything that we've cut, but we had to make choices and we prioritized." I think we'd really like to hear in terms of, you know, when we spend our money and go through this budget process in the next few months, where do we need to really focus our priorities? I know we get caught up in different areas and we, not that we lose sight of it, but sometimes we forget that a principal's made a choice between a reading teacher and a library and media aide, perhaps, and maybe they need both. And we made it, and we made another call because we're not fully understanding everything that, why they're making these priorities. It's not easy. It'll be, you know, another exercise for us to go through, hopefully in January and February, before we get into April, or we start, in May, when we start making these votes. Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? If none, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Both excellent motions, both, these are excellent motions. Moving on to the subcommittee's reports. Curriculum Subcommittee Report, approved with the minutes of the meeting of December 2nd. Connie Martin, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The Curriculum Administration Subcommittee did meet on December 2nd. Present were myself, also members of the Subcommittee, Mr. Leary, and Ms. Dougherty, and we had Mr. Leahy also join us from the central office and the administration. We had Dr. Scott, Deputy Superintendent Franco, Claire Abrams, Martha Cohn, Marcia Downey from the Daily, Renee Gaslay, and Claire Golis. We had a number of different topics that we did discuss. I'm just gonna kinda go in order, and then, Mr. Mayor, I think we can just approve it at the end. We didn't take any actions that would warrant an independent motion. First off, we did discuss student field trips, primarily at the high school. There was a question raised regarding a traditional Quebec field trip. We had not received the information in time, but I think the committee, the Subcommittee and the full committee certainly has expressed their interest in seeing this trip resume next year. We do want to see our students having this opportunity. We, from the beginning, have always just wanted to ensure that we had all the proper backup documentation and that the amount of school time that was sacrificed for this was very much defended. So that was the first topic. We also talked about school improvement, discussing the essential condition for school effectiveness, which is a draft that we were given, talking about the, the kind of frameworks for how we're going through this process of responding to some of the challenges in our, in our district. We have, as a committee, certainly been discussing that we recognize that we will probably have one or two schools that will be identified as Level 4, underperforming, and there's really no concrete information about what that will mean for those school communities, but the administration, certainly in the committee itself, are doing our best to find out information, and we're anticipating that by January, we should have a sense of what that designation is really gonna mean for us, and we are very, doing our best to be as proactive as possible in trying to have a real voice in how those intervention plans are crafted so that they are in line with what's best for our families here in the city of Lowell. We received an update on the K-8 math interventions. There is pre- and post-testing taking place this year on each unit, so that's gonna be, I think, very helpful, certainly over the course of the year, in helping teachers use that information more effectively. And I think it's gonna be great for this committee to be able to look at that at the conclusion of the year and really be able to gauge success. We discussed the financial literacy curriculum. Ms. Abrams did share with us the, what exists already in our curriculum that deals with the topics of financial literacy, and one of the actions that will be taking place is each of our math resource teachers are gonna be receiving specific binders that have curriculum supports that they can use to introduce financial literacy concepts into their already established mathematics curriculum. For myself, I, it certainly, it was a result of my motion a little while back, and I am really excited to see this kind of information getting into the hands of students because it really is, it's powerful information for even young children to begin to understand the consequences of financial decision-making. We discussed the sex and reproduction standards implementation at our middle schools. There has been a great deal of work going on on this with, working with some outside partners, with Healthy Futures, also with staff at each of our middle schools, trying to find the best way to implement this. I think the hardened, fast reality is that we all recognize that the best way to address this would be to have full-time health teachers at each one of our middle schools. We also all recognize that that is simply not feasible at this time, and the challenge now is to find a way to get this important information incorporated into our, into our school year, and that is continuing on. We have asked for each school to report back and tell us how their, what their plan is for getting this, this information and this curricula worked into their, into their school year. Finally, we discussed vertical articulation efforts. This was really an opportunity to talk about the meetings that take place as children go through those critical transitions in our district. It also talks about how our curriculum really ties together across their educational experience from kindergarten straight through the high school. I think that we've seen some real progress in this area, and it's one that warrants our continued attention, 'cause I do think it's one of the most critically important things we can do in terms of getting the most out of our curriculum and out of our, out of all of our staff's efforts, is to make sure that we are looking at a child's experience as a comprehensive process so that everything is tied together and building on things effectively, and we take advantage of every, of every opportunity for learning in a, in a logical and well-founded way. So those were the topics that were discussed. I would submit that as a report of progress, and any members who would like to add anything that I may have missed, please feel free.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. Just on the last part with the vertical articulation, I read the report that came from Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco, and it's very informative. The one suggestion I had or comment would be that I really didn't, I'm not getting out of it maybe that the eighth-grade teacher teams are meeting with the ninth-grade teacher teams, so I didn't know if, maybe we could even look into one of these, the evacuation days or the professional days that we have next year when we increase the number. Maybe there could be one point, at one point, those two teams could meet up and just discuss, you know, how the kids are doing when they come from the eighth grade into the freshman academy. That could happen already, I'm not sure, but I just thought that might be a suggestion. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the report? If none, accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The report has been accepted and placed on file. The next Subcommittee Report, the Joint Personnel Finance Report, approved with the minutes of the meeting, December 10th. Connie Martin, Chair, Personnel, James Leary, Chair, Finance.
I'll do it quickly, Mayor, thank you. We did meet on December 10th, and the entire committee was there, along with Committee Woman-Elect Allison Lariva. We also had the union and the vast majority of the staff members at the Merklin School. We also, in attendance, had David Nagel, Tommy Golden, Kevin Murphy, state representatives, in order to discuss the upcoming pending legislation involving the underperforming schools and the charter legislation, potential legislations coming forward. The state reps were, were very grateful, and want to send our gratitude to all of our delegation for taking the time to listen to us and to have our thoughts expressed to them, and have the teachers from the Merklin School and others present having an ability to ask questions of the representatives as well as pose potential alternatives. And I think the representatives gained, you know, insight in terms of, you know, what, at least what the Lowell Public School staff is thinking at this point in time, and I believe, I think they caucus today as a, as a body, and as we go forward, you know, there'll be opportunities, obviously, for both sides of these issues to express their opinions as this legislation will be debated, I believe, at the first point of January. In addition to this meeting, we also had, the Massachusetts Associations of School Committees had a regional meeting which was chaired by our colleague Committee Woman Dougherty in Marlborough, Massachusetts, where a lot of school committees, urban school committees from across the state met to discuss these issues, and they did speak with, and Ms. Dougherty can articulate this much better than I can, but did speak with Senator O'Leary from the Cape and Senators, our own Senator Stephen Panagiotakis regarding these issues, and I think there's a variety of different aspects that the senators point forward, but I think the first thing that Senator Panagiotakis pointed out is that next year financially, which had very little to do with the changes, but financially is going to be worse next year than this year currently. So I think folks should be prepared for that. But I think that was essentially the meeting. I know Ms. Dougherty would have some good comments regarding the meeting that was also held on Saturday, but I put that as a, as a motion for report of progress. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Many of you members were at that meeting. I would just like to say that it was well-attended, very informative, and I want to personally thank the teachers from the Merklin School who were there, and I think they described their workday fully, and how they reach out and help those children immensely. So it was, it was very informative, and I want to thank the Lowell delegation for being attendants as well. Accept the report as a report of progress by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Connie Martin, and we'll move on to the next Subcommittee Report. Athletic Subcommittee Report of the meeting of December 16, 2009. Regina M. Fattacante, Chair.
Thank you, Your Honor. Present at the meeting were School Community Man Dave Conway, School Community Man Leahy, who are members of the Subcommittee, and School Community Man Leary also joined us, as well as Deputy Superintendent Franco. The first item for discussion was the item regarding coaches. We all got home one night, a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, and saw that one of our coaches in our varsity program was going to be leaving us for the coming coaching season. I think that it was a surprise to each and every one of us, especially when parents started to call our houses and ask us about it, and unfortunately, the school committee was the last group of people who knew about that. So I think the first policy, Your Honor, and it shouldn't have to be a policy, it should be common sense, but sometimes, common sense does not prevail.
Courtesy.
Courtesy, thank you, Your Honor, absolutely. So, the Subcommittee, Mr. Leahy made a motion, seconded by Mr. Conway, that when there are going to be major changes in the positions of varsity coaches, that somebody should notify the school committee immediately, whether it come from the headmaster, whether it come from the superintendent, if the superintendent knows, whether it come from the A.D., I would imagine that the athletic director knew, that the school committee be warned about it. So that when, Your Honor, it's a basic courtesy. When a parent calls a school committee person, the school committee person should have the information. And we were probably the only people who didn't have the information. So that was the first item of business, and that would need to be, we need to take a vote on that here tonight. The second item of business, Your Honor, was regarding the student eligibility. We have some policies regarding student eligibility. The problem is that not all of our coaches teach at the high school, not all of our coaches are teachers for us, so they don't realize that they have an opportunity to go onto X2, they have an opportunity to speak to somebody about whether students are eligible or ineligible to play, and it has become an issue. Also, the ineligibility is an issue, but there's very little communication to coaches when students become eligible again to play until they show up, and a coach says, "Hey, what are you doing here?" And the student says, "Oh, I was cleared." So I think it's a matter of communication. I mean, we have policies, the school committee does not need to reinvent the wheel, but we're asking that the headmaster or the athletic director really reinforce these policies with our coaches. The other thing, Mr. Conway brought this up, and it was a student-generated progress report. Coaches all used to be at the high school, so I think it was Mr. Conway who indicated that when you came for your first coaching session of the season, you had your report card in your hand as a kid, 'cause you knew you weren't gonna get into the locker room without it. Well, that's not as big a deal anymore, and it should be, because playing sports is a privilege. And we have some of the best sports teams in the Commonwealth, so it's a huge privilege to play sports at Lowell High School for the Red Raiders. So we need to reinforce some kind of policy that discusses eligibility or ineligibility of our students. So I would probably be looking for some recommendations to come from the athletic director to the Athletic Subcommittee, so that they can really shore up those policies for the next, for the next school year. So we'd need to take a vote on the first motion, Your Honor.
The greater Lowell.
Ms. Dougherty?
We can take a vote on the motion. Did you need a second on the motion?
Yes.
You seconded the motion?
Seconded the motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? If none, roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
That's it, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Accept the report, Your Honor.
Accept the report, place it on file.
Accept the report, as a report of progress, and place it on file, by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. Moving on with the agenda, reports of the Superintendent, Personnel Report, Madam Superintendent.
In front of you is recent retirement, resignations, and new hires since October the 7th, and would you like to take these separate or together, the list of eligible teachers as well?
Any discussion on the report? If none, this is the Personnel Report.
Personnel Report, and as well, there's the list of eligible teachers report.
Accept the report. As a report of progress by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Conway, that's been placed on file. And the list of eligible teachers is included with that report? Madam Superintendent?
I'm sorry, Your Honor, what was that?
Was the list of eligible teachers that's a part of that report?
Yes. Global approval on the list of eligible teachers, Your Honor?
Move approval of Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leahy. Accept the report as a report of progress, place it on file. Anything else, Madam Superintendent? Anything else, Madam Superintendent?
Excuse me, you finish with her. I'm ready to move on to new business, if there's no questions on those reports.
I would like to suspend the rules to bring in some new business.
Second.
I just want to ask the Superintendent if she could give us an update.
Let's get the suspension of the rules.
Suspension of the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacante, all in favor of the--
What's the reason, I have to have a reason.
I started to say that, to update us on the charter school in Lowell and the Bailey School administration change.
Roll call on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mia Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
On the suspension of the rules.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the Superintendent. I know there's been a lot of talk in the last few days, for most people, they get their information from the local paper. I know we've had, you know, emails of information coming through, and I just thought it would be helpful for our community if we could have a discussion about these two major items, and I realize that they're both somewhat influx and somewhat sensitive.
Sure.
But I would just like to, through you, ask the Superintendent if she could give us an update on the situation with the Lowell Charter School, what we know at this point, and follow that with an update about the Bailey School change, and be able to take any questions from us after that. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you for the questions. I received two calls from the Commissioner on Monday morning to inform me that he was going to make the announcement, as I indicated in the email, that he was not going to recommend renewal of the charter school status for the charter school in Lowell, which has approximately 953 children. Our understanding is 850 of those children are Lowell residents. At that time, the Commissioner was very complimentary of Lowell Public Schools and the good work that has been done, that is being done here, and that on basically 13 of the 14 measures, we outperformed the charter school. And that based on that, obviously, the recommendation would be to close the charter school based on the facts we have now and for these children to attend Lowell Public Schools. I was able to meet with the charter school administration this morning, the principal and the director, to have a conversation about their concerns around the closure of the charter school. My understanding is that they have met with their board and that they want to, my understanding is, to stay open and to have conversations going forward that would result in that happening. So that is not necessarily our business, obviously, if they stay open or if they don't, but the impact, the impact of them closing and coming into our schools, we welcome all children. With that said, we have closed many schools, turned some of our elementary schools, our middle schools into alternative schools, the Barnum School most recently, and then the middle school, based on the projections of flat enrollment throughout the system. And we knew that we were facing very difficult financial times, not only in FY10, which we're presently in, but fiscal year FY11 and FY12. So the committee, in its wisdom, saw it very necessary to make sure that we had classrooms of industry standard across the system, K through 8. With the closing of the Rogers School, that's what we addressed. The K to 4 level was already addressed pretty well at industry standard, 22, 23, 24, and a class across the system, which we want to keep class sizes low for a whole host of reasons. And at the middle school, we had some classrooms last year with classroom sizes of 14, 15, 16 for various reasons. With the closing of the Rogers School, we now have class sizes across the system with, on average, between 25 and 28, 29, depending on what grade level and what school. That's all significant to us, because if in fact the charter school were to close, the Rogers School would obviously have to go back online, because we just couldn't absorb 900 children into those classrooms with those numbers. Given the number of children, we're looking at even bringing, if we were in fact to bring the Rogers School back online, we are still looking, 900 students to us is approximately two schools, 500 and 400. So we would still be looking for another school size to place all our students in, which would bring our class sizes across the system in many schools at the very young, you know, K to 4 level, 30 or more. So we're running those numbers as we speak, just so that we're aware. Again, there's no vote being taken by the Department of Elementary Secondary Education until January. I do not know, you know, to what extent the charter school will be successful in their efforts to stay open, but I do understand, and, you know, I know that they are hardworking at the charter school and trying to address many needs of the children there, as we are here in Lowell Public Schools. As a school district who has the second largest English language learner population and many special education issues across our system, to expand our class sizes any more than they presently are would just be very difficult, not only for the children coming into our system, but also the children whom we presently are trying to serve in a time where we have faced over six years of cuts now, and as most recently is last year. So our capacity to be able to effectively educate such an influx of children, when we were expecting to have, again, enrollment between 0 and 1 percent, to have approximately 8 percent increase in one year, is a big issue for us. I do have a, I did hear from the Senator's Office, Senator Steve Panagiotakis today, and, you know, just about, we've had numerous conversations about these type of concerns, and, you know, he's been great to advise and to assist, and will continue to work with his office as well on these particular issues. It's unprecedented, to be quite frank with you, to have, to be in this situation. It hasn't occurred, and we are meeting with the Commissioner next Tuesday to discuss our concerns about our ability and our capacity. The funding formula for children who go into the charter schools, approximately $12,000 a student. If they, these same children who come to us will be funded by formula around $8,000 a student. If we take off the charter school reimbursement in the state, children who leave us and go into a charter school, we get reimbursement over a three-year period. The first year is like 60 percent and 40 percent, and in the last year, I stand to be corrected, but considerably less than that. But our reimbursement rate next year was going to be 2.1 million. So arguably, given the financial picture that it's very bleak that we're facing, when you look at 900 students, we're being, we would be, potentially being asked to set up two schools with something between 6 and 8 million dollars, which alone, that wouldn't effectively set up one. So it's a, it's an issue for us, again, you know, for those who are listening, who attend the charter school and they're part of our community, we welcome all of our children who, you know, live in Lowell to Lowell Public Schools, but we want to make sure that we bring all of the resources to bear, we want to make sure that the people at the state level are aware of the impact of such a decision, and just ask for their assistance, to ask for their help, and we want to make sure that all these issues are raised at very high levels before the vote is taken by the Department of Ed Board.
Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question on that, through you to the Superintendent. I don't know very much about the Horace Mann Charter Schools, but would that be a possibility for us to take it, because with the Horace Mann Schools, I believe there is additional funding, and we would have control over the school, but it would be like a district-run charter school. Is that an option that we could explore? I mean, I don't expect you to tell us tonight.
Right.
Is it something we could at least look into?
I think, again, I think everything's on the table. I have, the only conversation I had with the Commissioner was the one I just stated, which was very to the point, congratulations to Lowell Public Schools, and here's 900 children. So basically, at this point, we need to have a follow-up conversation to ask questions like that. What are the options for us? What are the options for the charter school? How can we be supportive of the students who are there and at the same time be sensitive to our limited capacity to address the many needs that we presently have in our system as well, without additional funding? Again, it really does, just because we've been hit so, it's just been, the last 8 million that we just cut out of the system, we're feeling cracks in the ship. People are working two and three job descriptions, and I could go down the list, but people are extremely hardworking and, you know, people are really trying to do a lot with very little throughout our system. And again, I had principals this week, that's why I appreciate the motions from School Committee Leary and Leahy, with regards to looking at, across the system, the staffing models that are presently in place at our various schools, because we're at a point now where things are so tight that we are going to have to make some very difficult decisions, and the committee needs to have this information in front of them so that they, we can show you, okay, these are the special education needs of these children, we need this many special education teachers, we need this many reading teachers, and we're in the very, very difficult situation of putting that on the table and then making recommendations of what we're going to cut at the same time in order to fund those priorities. So it's not like we're going to add additional reading teachers or special education teachers, which we're in great need of, with it coming up from somewhere else. So the conversations I've had with principals is I need a reading teacher, I need a special education teacher, we're looking at that, as you know, in the data summits. So people are able to look at their data and say, okay, well, Chris, you know, for me to be able to address the needs of these children at this grade level, I will need an additional staff, because special education teacher can't have a caseload of 42 children. They're right, they can't. And so, you know, we've already begun to pull the staff makeup at these schools, to ask those questions. Okay, no more money on the table, perhaps less, and how are we going to prioritize so we can bring that forward to the committee?
Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. Through you, the Superintendent. So if we, just, if the scenario plays out that we absorb these, just for round numbers, 800 students, we don't automatically get the $8,000 per student, or do we?
We do.
We do, correct. So we would get an increase of somewhere around 7 million, but, right, something like that, okay.
8.1. It depends on what number you use.
Yeah, whatever number we use, yeah. Okay. The other question is, is there, does somebody have to give us, or we have to demand some sort of a timeline? We have to know, so we can plan.
Right.
If these children are coming. So has anybody discussed that? I know they said they're going to bring it up for a vote.
Right.
But, I mean, we need to know, because if we need to reopen that school, we have to move the administration out.
Right.
So we have some big changes coming, if this happens, so.
Exactly. No, there is no timeline, and again, to reiterate, there's no vote taken, you know, so maybe that it doesn't occur, but the position that your administration is presently in is that we have to run all the different scenarios, so that I can make the case with the Commissioner on Tuesday to what this exactly would mean to education in Lowell Public Schools for all the children, for the children who would come in, for the children who are here. So needless to say, it's a curveball we didn't necessarily see in the middle of prepping for Level 4 schools and a whole host of other issues, but this is definitely on the front burner.
Right. We had somewhat of a similar situation in the 80s when we had huge influx of people into the city, and we had, you know, classrooms, you know, spread out all over the city, and that probably started the desegregation and the building program and all that. So we probably can look back and learn from that to help us get through this next situation if it happens. But, I mean, they should, they should give us some sort of a deadline that they have to let us know whether it's going to happen or not, so.
That would be good.
Maybe we can push them for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
Just quickly, and you won't have the answer tonight, but just something to consider when you're going through your review. The actual building that they're in right now, is that something that they could release or what have you going forward? Not to think that you would have that information, but as you do your due diligence, should this happen. The other issue that Ms. Doherty pointed out was interesting is something about the Horace Mann charter issues. I'm not sure if that's something that would be explored. Obviously, bringing in 900 students or 800 students, who knows if all 800 would want to come to a public or go to a parochial. These are things we would love to take a look at in terms of, they're really not going to be fitting into our buildings. This doesn't make any sense, no matter how far you do the drill, it's going to look, you're just not going to be able to do it and be effective.
Right.
But if you can keep the existing school in place with a different administration and a different governing board, if that's the case where, if the Department of Ed chooses not to keep that particular school open, I think that's something you need to explore and provide that information to the state. I think what's going to happen, however, is that the state is probably going to do that on their own. I mean, again, you have to do your due diligence, I think we should express to them, they would obviously be cooperative and work with them, because these are our kids, these are our Lowell citizens for the most part.
Right.
But I think that's something that they'll end up working out on their own. But I appreciate you putting the effort into it, and something, again, just to explore whether or not that particular building can be released, or if it's something that, the reason why they were getting out of it, because it was antiquated, just like many of our schools. Thank you.
Anyone else like to discuss this particular issue? Madam Superintendent, I would certainly join you Tuesday at that meeting, and this is a huge problem that was, has been presented to this school committee and this administration. And I liked the Lowell Sun editorial today, where they discussed the possibility, why can't a private management firm come in and take over this charter school, because it hasn't been run efficiently, and those children are not getting a good education there. And Madam Superintendent, if we had a school in our district, a Level 5 school, and we didn't do anything about it, wouldn't the state just come right in and take that school over?
The new legislation that they're presently looking at, the Education Reform Act of 2009, has some provision about Level 5 schools. It hasn't been passed yet, but in the future, my understanding is, public schools that are designated as a Level 4, and they have three years to improve, and if at that point in time, they don't approve, they're not improving, it is my understanding, they would be designated as a Level 5 and quote-unquote, taken over.
I know that this administration and this school committee and the new mayor will do everything humanly possible to make sure those children receive the education they deserve. I know it's puzzling, the move out of downtown, I supported it, it was a financial move, and the Rogers School was available, and we made that move. And now, we're faced with finding a school for these children. And who knew, back in May and June, that this problem existed? Nobody knew, and it's, I can't hear you.
Right now, because if we got this influx of students, Ms. Doherty and I were just having a conversation, the building that they're in is privately owned.
That's right.
So we don't have the money to buy it. So we'd have to look to an existing school structure within our own school district, and we'd have to maybe look at the Rogers School again, and moving our administration office again. I mean, it would just be, it would be a horrific situation.
And I know, and I won't publicly state, but I know they are paying an exorbitant rent at that facility, exorbitant, so.
Just to kind of clarify, I appreciate that the administration's going through the due diligence, but again, the board, the Department of Ed's got a vote on it in January. We're just being prepared. The reality is that likely what they're going to do is bring in a new board or what have you, and fix the situation, as opposed to just simply wiping out 900 students. Now, if they do do that, at least we'll be prepared to face those circumstances, or at least prepared to show them what a catastrophic event that would actually incur, so it'd be more appealing for them to rearrange their organization as opposed to just letting 900 students. So again, I don't think it's time to panic, I think it's time to provide the information to them, listen to them, and we can go forward, and at least we'll be prepared. Right now is not the time to get worried about it. Thank you.
You're right by saying it's not time to panic, but it is time to stop planning and lay those plans out very carefully, and I know you, this committee and this administration will do that. But when I, when I received this news, it was like getting hit over the head with a hammer. Where are we going to find a school to service these children? And it's, you know, I guess this job's never boring, so. Anything else, Ms. Doherty? Yeah, Ms. Madam Superintendent?
I'd just like to address the Bailey School situation with regards to the administration at that school. Presently, just to update the committee, I did meet with staff, as I communicated in your FYI packet, to discuss with them that their principal is on paid administrative leave, and-- administrative leave. And I will, for human resource reasons, personnel issues, leave that off, out of this discussion at this time. But we are very concerned about the academic rigor at the school and issues around curriculum alignment and ensuring that our students are receiving the education that they all deserve at the school. I met with the staff and then with the parent community, who are very supportive of low public schools and the steps we're taking to ensure that their students and their children are receiving the highest quality education possible. Sue Mulligan, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources Personnel, has been indefinitely assigned as interim so that the school has a full leadership team. We are fully committed to addressing all the academic issues at the school. And in concert with the parent community, we had probably about sixty to seventy parents come out on a very rainy night to hear the steps that we are presently putting in place with regards to staff. And we plan to meet with the community in February after the administration meets with staff, looks at their data, decides next steps, and to share that with the school community. Parents have reached out to us asking to be part of the team, part of the process. They want to support the classroom teachers and the administration as we go forward to improve the growth data at the Bailey School. So we're thinking that we will have more of an update for the parent community and for the school committee on the steps concretely that are, have been taken to address the issues that the growth data presents to us. And we will do that as the winter moves on.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you for that update. And if I could just follow up with a question, through you to the superintendent. I guess my concerns are, at this point, aside from the progress in what you're going to be doing at the Bailey, what's happening in human resources? Because I think a lot of the professional development, you know, teachers staying accredited in their field, the licensure stuff, quarry checks, retire, I mean, I could go on, but I'm just, off the top of my head, trying to think of all the tasks-
Mm-hmm.
-that came under Assistant Superintendent Mulligan. What is the plan for making sure that department is still providing services, very important services, to the district?
I'll give an overview this evening, but to do the topic justice, a full report needs to be presented to the committee. But it's taken at this point at least four personnel who presently are on our payroll to absorb the duties of Assistant Superintendent Mulligan. So everything from people in the business office to the professional development office and in the HR office. So we have and continue to tweak the job descriptions, but we are at basically a point in time where we need significant HR functions that Sue Mulligan used to do to be reassigned to other people. Because as we are looking at our budget, looking for reading teachers, special education teachers, we are going to have to realign the systems, both in the HR department and the business office, so that we streamline to the best of our ability all of those functions and take whatever cuts we can at that administrative level in order to generate whatever funds we can for those reading teachers, for those special education teachers. And, but a full report needs to be provided to the committee. Assistant Superintendent Mulligan came to me this fall and expressed interest to become principal. We had a lengthy conversation about her desire to do so. She was very sensitive to the economic forecast that we were going to be facing very difficult times coming up. So we've had numerous conversations with the cabinet and other personnel involved the last few months. When the situation arose at the Bailey School, it fast-tracked some of these plans that we were thinking about implementing at the end of June, not necessarily in November. So that's what we're presently working on, to bring that forward as a full report on the job descriptions and how those positions will be impacted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Larry?
Thank you, Mayor. Just through you to the superintendent. I think some of this is not the best-case scenario, but it's like almost, you had to react in a way very, very, well, quickly. And making decisions in terms of reorganizing our central administrative staff is needed. We were going to end up doing that in May and June anyway. But I think doing it in January and February is an area where we can prepare, fine-tune areas that are not working efficiently before we actually get into the budget session. So it's an opportunity that will save close to $100,000 in personnel actually making one move. It's an area, though, that, as Ms. Doherty pointed out, is very important. And we need to ensure that we're very successful with these changes that we've made. Because if we're not successful, they will create, you know, hazards with our finances, not only with our personnel, but actual, if we're doing something wrong, we're going to pay for it ultimately. But I am in support of making these moves because I think they need to be made, first of all. And I think, looking at the central office, it really has to suit and serve the schools that we have in the field. I mean, it's a corporate office, if you will. And the corporate office exists to do two things, to serve the folks that actually do the day-in, day-out work, and two, really to hold them accountable as well. So I support the move. I think it's needed. We just need to ensure that the implementation is successful. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I would just like to say, during these hard fiscal times, you have to be innovative. You can come up with initiatives that will save money, but continue to provide that great education that the children deserve. And Susan Mulligan, I wish you the best at the Bailey School. And anytime I can be of any service to you, I'll be there. And Madam Superintendent, thank you for that initiative. Any other discussion? John Leahy?
Sure, thank you. I wasn't sure, but I did want to just say one thing that, you know, when this report comes out to us, I'm sure that other, you know, you'll let staff and the school principals know and stuff. Someone came up to me in the hallway today, and they were talking about the reorganization. And there's all sorts of rumors out there that different people are getting promotions and raises and stuff. And I said to them, you know, we're reorganizing. We're not giving out big raises right now or anything. We're just reorganizing. So, you know, I don't know if we find it necessary to make that report widespread, just so people know what's going on in the system, you know? I mean, we'll get the report, as you said, about the reorganization. But it's just, it's crazy when you get people come up that work for us, and they're saying, well, this one's going over here and getting a huge raise, and this one's going here. And we're saying, you know, we're dealing with situations as they arise. And we're not, you know, wasting money or wasting our time. But, so I just thought that might be helpful, too, just to let everybody know when we get that report that, you know, we assure them we're doing the best we can. I mean, we are, so. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I do think Mr. Leahy brings up a good point. And I think what might be kind of our best process going forward is that if this was a report that could come to the Personnel Subcommittee in January, obviously, like all of our reorganizations, it will need to include what the dollars and cents are, what the overall savings is and how that, you know, how that was achieved. So I do think it's an important point to note that there are dollar figures attached to all of these decisions, in addition to the care and concern for the quality of work that we need to see in place. Thank you.
I must say, if any raises are given out to anyone in the school department, it has to come before you. And that's where the raises is either voted to improve or reject. So, Ms. Supp? Moving on with the agenda. Madam Superintendent, the, am I right by saying permission to post a Lowell High School headmaster? Is that the next on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
In front of, are we going to discuss this resume or this?
Well, I have some things to say about-
Me, too. So.
Madam Superintendent?
So open up the floor to discussion.
What's?
Your Honor, what is the wish of the body? The first one, requirements, a master's degree or higher. Can we also put in there PhD preferred? Not for nothing, it is, we are, what, second or third largest high school in the Commonwealth?
Second.
Four thousand kids, lots of cultural issues. Somebody with, somebody who is working towards a PhD or has a PhD, I would seem, I would prefer a person in that capacity or at that level to hold that position. I know that might leave some people out, but I mean, it's PhD preferred. If somebody walks in to the door, they don't have a PhD, they have a master's, and they knock everyone's socks off, then that should be the candidate. But I also think that that level of education brings something to the table. And it's, you know, it's the fifth highest position in our school system after the central administration.
The issue I have is the salary.
Well, I was getting to that.
And why are we giving this person, no matter who he or she may be, a raise? And we all know, if you put $135,000 down there for salary, there's a strong possibility that person's going to get that salary.
Right.
And these hard fiscal times, what's wrong with offering $125,000 for this position, for this new person? And once you send this application out, there'll be a line of people applying. So that's my argument on this whole thing. But I didn't want to interrupt you.
I also have a question on number four. Minimum of five-year successful administrative experience at the high school or district level. What does the word district level mean? Madam Superintendent?
At the district level, meaning director, coordinator, central office, yeah.
Okay.
Assistant superintendent.
Okay.
Superintendent.
And then number six, I'm sorry, number five. Since we're talking about strong communication skills, I think we need to spell out, when it says community members, we have an ethnically rich and culturally diverse community. And I think that anybody who comes to the high school needs to have that kind of experience. You cannot be coming from Georgetown and walking in our doors and be thinking that you're, you understand what it means to be a gang member or to be homeless. So I think that we also need to be looking at, when we're talking about communication skills, someone who-
Of course.
Yeah, someone who has a diverse cultural or ethnic background, or an understanding of a diverse ethnic background, or has worked with a diverse ethnic background. Because that, unfortunately, that is not mentioned anywhere here. And I think that it needs to be, considering it's a low high school. I mean, when, fifty years ago, we would have been looking at somebody who had the ability to work with different ethnic groups. Okay? Because we've got, oh, what, eighty ethnic groups in the city? Fifty years later, we're looking at somebody who's able to work with different, different races, different cultures. I think it's important to spell that out.
Hold on a second.
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. And I think that that's an excellent point. What I'd recommend is that if we could put into the language, you know, experience in working in diverse communities, preferred-
Yes.
-the same kind of, you know, emphasis, just in order to ensure that we cast as broad a net as possible. You know, I would also echo some of the concerns regarding the salary range that's being advertised. I would like to broaden that. And, I mean, I think we should be, personally, I think we should be looking between 115, you know, 125 at a maximum. I'd be open to debate on that if there's some compelling reason why we think that's there. But in my mind, it is, you know, these are times when every, you know, every dollar counts. And if we can, at least as a starting point, you know, try to get ourselves in a situation where we're bringing someone on who is looking at this as an opportunity to grow professionally-
Right.
-and, you know, salary can grow with that.
Ms. Doherty, then, Ms. Leahy?
Thank you. This is really kind of a follow-up to Ms. Martin's comment. I'm wondering, did we, do we have any data that says, like, what are headmasters of large urban high schools getting paid? I'm thinking about-
But Ms. Doherty, I mean, we decide. We shouldn't be looking at what-
I like to finish my sentence, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I'm thinking about a report they just had in the Boston Globe about Brockton High School that made incredible gains in reducing the achievement gap between their minority students and their socio-economically challenged students with their middle-class students. And for six years, they've been just fast-tracking this high school. And I, for one, and I think that my colleagues would agree, we'd like to get the most qualified, capable headmaster we possibly could. And so I'd like to know what the competition out there is offering as just a piece of information.
So you're in favor of paying this person a high salary?
I'm in, I'd like to know if there's any data about what headmasters are getting paid in large urban school districts in Massachusetts.
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, there is. And that's the data in front of you, 125 to 135. I did ask Assistant Superintendent Mulligan to do the research, to find out what the range was. But I really would appreciate, tonight, when the school committee specifically needs to vote either a salary or a salary range. In the past, it was just, for example, the job description and the posting. But the new city auditor, I guess she's not new anymore, but if you recall in one of our previous postings, she needs it specified in the minutes, the amount to be offered. So that's how it was determined. And actually, I did meet with the superintendent of schools for Brockton today. And one of those, the high school performance did come up, and we're very interested to explore further. No, specifically, I didn't ask that question.
Mr. Conway?
Yes, through you to the superintendent. Are middle school principals and elementary school principals, what would be the highest paid salary? Let's assume, for argument's sake, that we're talking on the doctorate level.
At the doctorate level? I'd like to point a clarification from Assistant Superintendent Mulligan, but I believe it's 110. Would I stand to be corrected? 110, approximately.
Hundred and ten thousand?
Yes.
And what would that represent as far as the number of students are concerned? How many students in that school?
Depending on the school, from 500 to 600, I'm assuming.
So, and that individual that's getting paid $110,000, it would be approximately 600 students?
That's correct.
Okay. How many students do we have now at the high school?
Approximately 3,300. Approximately 3,300.
Thirty-three hundred. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Leahy, then, Ms. Larry?
Thank you. So we, according to the auditor, then we can't put range-
You can put a range. I just need it specified.
Well, no, but I mean, can we put range to be determined? No. You need numbers.
You can post it in the paper that way, but before I can pay the individual, I need a vote. At some point, I need a vote.
Okay. Okay. So what I was, all right. So you can't put range, you know, whatever. Okay. The other thing was, I think, too, if we go too low on this, we have to know what we're paying the next person in line at the high school, too. So we can't pay the person lower than what the curriculum person is getting at the high school, the next person in charge.
Right.
So we have to make sure, you know, the range is fair. But, I mean, I really, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I can see your point, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, if you make a range, obviously, people go gravitate to the highest amount.
Right.
But that would depend on their experience and qualifications. The other point I did want to make is, under the advisory panel or whatever-
Right.
-we're calling it here, I thought we should have someone from the high school students on that-
That's a great idea.
On that committee. I can't find what we're calling it here, but we should have someone from, someone responsible picked. Pardon me?
I think it was one or two.
All right. Should be one or two on the search committee, at least, you know? And we know who we could pick for that, so. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Larry, and then?
Okay. Hi, Mayor. Thank you very much. I just want to echo what Mr. Leahy said. I think the range itself, I mean, what I'll do at the end of my discussion is make a motion for the range, for what I think would be appropriate. But I think, you know, we're looking at, I think Mr. Samaris is making, 129, 130,000 right now in that area. I think a good range would be in the realm of a low range of like 115. I don't have a problem with putting the range up to 135 if that superstar candidate does come in. Granted, you're going to be, we're going to be looking at it, you're going to be looking at it in particular because you're the one who's ultimately charged with hiring that individual and evaluating that individual. That if we see the candidate that we want, and that's going to be the person who's going to take our high school- and that's going to be the person who's going to take our high school through the next, hopefully, 10 to 15 years, we want that candidate. But in saying that, I think bringing the range down below the 125 to a reasonable area of 115 would be both respectful and, I think, I think appropriate. I want to echo it going over the, thank you very much for doing the hard work, and I want to thank that committee that you put together, that put together the information that we're looking at tonight in terms of the job description. Obviously, as you look at it, changes are in order, but I think those are good recommendations from us, and you may have some more before you even release it. Mr. Leary had a good point about putting a student on this committee. I'd like to see more parents involved with this committee. I know we have the Citywide Parent Council, the special education folks, I think Friends of Lowell High. I think we should have some more Friends of Lowell High on this committee. I know we talked, and I think we're going to get someone from the Lowell Plan, so we have the business community represented. But I think parents are the ones who ultimately are paying the taxes for their student, their child, to go here. They can have choices. They can send their child to Lowell Catholic or send them to Central Catholic. I think they need to make the majority of this board up, in my opinion. Because those are the ones, those are our customers. Those are the folks that ultimately we're serving, if you will. I do like the dynamic of having some administrators on and some teachers on and what have you, but at the end of the day, and the business community, some nonprofits, too, would be good, a student. But the important thing is to get the parents involved. We talk about that time and time again, but this is an opportunity to show that we mean it. They should make up the majority of the board. And one thing I'd like to see is have this done in public. I think the public should see how their deliberations are going, not to do this behind closed doors. I don't know what the legality of that is, but I think as much of this as in public is appropriate, so people can see how we've came to decisions, not only the interviews, but how folks made their decisions for who they're going to recommend to you, the final two or three candidates, for a decision-making process. What I'll do now, at this point, if I could, is make a motion for the salary range to be between the minimum of 115,000 and a maximum of 135,000. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Repeat that motion?
Make a motion for the salary range between the minimum of 115,000 and the maximum of 135,000.
115.
115. To 135, thank you.
We have a second on that motion? Second on the motion. Any discussion on the motion?
Ms. Martin, you should check it in.
Sure. I would like to discuss the motion. First of all, I won't support the motion. The 135 is still in there. And let me just say a few things. There were two suburban towns that put out requests for applicants to be a town administrator. One town received 45 applicants, 45, and every one of them are outstanding. Another town just hired a new administrator and was, that person was requesting a certain salary, and they didn't give them that salary. They reduced the salary. And the gist of my argument here, as long as you have the 135 in there, someone's going to make a motion, give this person 133. We didn't give 135, we gave 133. I also support John Leary's motion that you can't have this person making less money than the next person in charge. That's ridiculous. But what's so wrong with giving this new person, no matter who he or she is, the same salary that Bill Samaras is making now? And I believe that's 127. It's 129? Then reduce it to 125. Anyone who wants that job, they're going to grow with this great school, second or third largest in the state, and we've all said things are going to be tough financially. Right now, this doesn't look like it's going to be tough. And I will not support the motion, so, Mr. Conway.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to disagree with you on that.
But you're right.
I understand. The fact is that Mr. Samaras is making, did you say 129,000?
I didn't say that, Mr. Leary did.
I'm sorry, 129,000. I don't think we have to start off at $129,000 at all, to be quite frank with you. That's after, I don't know how many years he's been working in the school system, about 40 or 50 or whatever, but the fact is, that length of time, well, 40, 40 years, all right, I'm close.
Want to start over, Dave?
That was just a slip, actually.
All right.
44, I'm sorry, 44 years. I said 40 to 50, that was a range.
Like the salary.
I just happened to go on the upper end on that range. But as...
Go ahead, Dave.
But as far as the money is concerned, I think that, I think there perhaps needs to be a bit of an adjustment, and I think that we have to realize that if you talk to people, whether it's in business or in the medical field or in the education field, there are more people going for jobs than ever before because of the economy. And I think that it's a matter of supply and demand, and I think that Mr. Leary happened, mentioned about the taxpayer, and that's who we are responsible to also. And we certainly have to get the right person for the job, but I think that that range, as far as I'm concerned, needs to be shot in a bit, and I don't see anything wrong with going from, let's say, 120 to 130. And I think you're right, as soon as somebody says 135, right away, somebody says, well, let's give them 133, 134. I think that at 120 and 130, I think that that's a respectable number, and I feel that we would certainly get plenty of applicants for that position. The other thing I would just like to mention quickly is the number-two position, which John Leary brought up, which I think is important to do, is to keep that in mind, too. And I'm not exactly sure what the Director of Curriculum is making, but needless to say, we have to, there has to be an adjustment above that. And again, what I was trying to bring out a few minutes ago was the fact that we have principals at this point making $110,000 with 600 students. So I think that we have to be a little careful with that. And I think that range of a 120 or 130 might be perhaps more appropriate.
Is that an amendment to...
I was just going to ask that.
I'd like to make that...
Wait.
I'd like to make that as a...
I would agree to amend my motion, because that's a reasonable compromise. I'd amend my motion, too, from 120 to 130. That's a reasonable number.
Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Conway on the amendment. Ms. Doherty?
I was just going to offer it as an amendment. What about 115 to 130? You want to go up to the 120 or 115 to 130?
We just have a motion on the floor.
And then we have an amendment.
An amendment to the motion, it's 120 to 130, is that so?
Yes. That's the motion now, the amendment.
Any discussion on the motion presented as amended? It's something I could support, and it's showing a little bit of concern over the financial issues as well. And no matter who the committee hires, the superintendent hires, rather, that person will do a great job, and there's probably somebody in-house that can take over that job, and whoever that person is, they have big shoes to fill. And I was with Bill Samaras at the high school today, and he's done a great job. But whoever you hire to replace him will have big shoes to fill, and there's nothing wrong with adjusting the salary that they'll bring that person on. Any discussion, any more discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved. Motion as amended, approved.
Right. Moving on with the agenda, the Lowell School Administrators Association requests approval to donate 32 sick leave days to Joanne Karahi, special education social worker. Move for approval by Connie Martin. Seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Roll call. Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Is there anything else on the agenda?
Why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Okay.
That way, if people want to leave, they can go.
Motion to take a five-minute recess by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, signify by say nine. Pause, five-minute recess.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Is part of the vote we had just taken?
This would be a new vote that would enact all those things, so I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call on the motion.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
The next thing on the agenda, the last thing on the agenda, is Lowell School Administrators Association requests approval to donate 32 sick leave days to Joanne Karahi, special education social worker. Move for approval by Connie Martin. Seconded by Ms. Fattacante. Roll call. Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Is there anything else on the agenda?
Why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Okay.
That way, if people want to leave, they can go.
Motion to take a five-minute recess by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor, signify by say nine. Pause, five-minute recess. Madam Clerk, the call, please.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mia Carfield.
Here.
Seven present.
Appreciation for the services of school committee member Regina M. Fattacante. And I believe we do have a video to show your twenty-four years of service and who is going to control?
None.
Okay. Thank you.
Goes back to the founding fathers. We take everybody. We don't exclude anyone.
Commitment, passion, dedication to those in need. These are the traits that run as common threads through the fabric of more than two decades of distinguished public service from Regina Fattacante.
In my opinion, the most important elective job is that of the school committee. You know my feelings on this. School committees requires not only lots of time, but it requires dedication, knowledge, and a commitment to do the best you can for the most important assets we have, our children.
Want to become a caring community, and if we want to make our schools successful, then we need to take some drastic measures. And one of those drastic measures is to make sure schools are more accessible for children who really need a place to be, who need a home. Children whose families are working have a place to be safe instead of in a household with the television. My main concern was that we aren't sitting in a vacuum as far as what our responsibilities are for reporting child abuse. The way the rules were applied, they were applied unfairly to us as a community, to us as a city, to us as a school system, and to an individual who has spent a greater part of his life as a football coach.
I want to thank you for all the things you've done for the kids in this city. You've been there for so long, considering going back, all the new schools in the city have your name on them. It was a lot of hard work by yourself and many committee members before you.
To see the dream come true of building all of these schools, we have a building plan that is second to none in this state and in the New England states. And it was because George Zapposara sat down with people like myself and former Senator, Senator Panjatakis, former school chairman Steve Panjatakis, and said, hey, we need to build some new schools. And if we truly want a first-rate school system, if we truly want a comprehensive desegregation plan, if we truly want a school system that every child has equal access and equal opportunity, then we have to make that happen.
But what we're trying to clarify is that if a child needs a resource room for two hours a day for reading assistance, then that IEP team ought to be able to feel free to recommend that. And our state senator, who I believe Senator Panjatakis used to be head of the Special Ed Subcommittee when he was a member of the school committee, to ask them to speak favorably and to vote favorably on any measures that would enhance the funding back to cities and towns regarding Special Ed costs.
These ten years, we've, I think, disagreed as often as we've agreed. And the real truth of it is, is that I'm better at this job today because you were there to disagree with me. I think over the course of time, we've certainly worked on a lot of very difficult issues. And it was always great to be working with someone who was so direct, always ready to take on difficult issues. And I think, you know, overall, the work that you've done to take our school district and foster it and steward it through these very difficult years has been a huge benefit to our city.
We walked down the floor where the Latin Lyceum was, and it was, it was an awesome experience to see what was going on there. Everybody was doing their job, all the way from the hall monitors to people who were in classrooms teaching to security. It was just, it was, it was just wonderful to see what was happening at that high school. And, and I guess what, I guess we just sometimes just don't give the people who are doing the job every day on the front line the kind of credit that they deserve. That band walked from the high school to the auditorium in a downpour with those heavy woolen uniforms on, went upstairs, and, and they, they were incredible.
Throughout those years, I know that you've taken some very interesting and positive votes that helped to make the school system where it is today.
Veronica, when you have a child in school, it's a quality of life issue. The kind of program you want your child to attend, the time, the neighborhood. Now, it may not be important to me as I sit here, but it is very important to that parent when it's their child and it's their child's education.
Hi Regina, I just wanted to wish you well. I want to thank you for your twenty-four years of service here in the city of Lowell. You're part of some of the biggest projects, the school building projects, the school desegregation plan. You are integral part of this school committee for the past twenty-four years, and we need to say thank you and we wish you well.
Thanks so much and best wishes.
Thank you very much for your service Regina, and good luck.
The city of Lowell should appreciate your years of service. I wish you well, and you did a wonderful job. Thank you very much.
So, don't be a stranger. Thank you and good night.
Amid the turbulent climate of the nineteen eighties, Regina stepped forward and has worked tirelessly to help rebuild our schools, better educate our children, and ultimately to renew the city of Lowell. For all this work, the city is eternally grateful, and we extend our heartfelt thanks.
That passion I have, that voice I have, the desire to represent my community, I love this city. It has given me wonderful opportunities. And as a result of that, it's given me an opportunity to serve it, to give back.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, before Regina gets a chance to rebut, I would just like to take this opportunity, we have a couple small remembrances that we'd like to give to our colleague. But I do just want to reiterate, you know, certainly some of what I had said in the video, and I'm sure my colleagues would like to follow up also. It is, it is an amazing term of service to have devoted so much time and effort, and I think in many ways, it's just the people who've sat in these seats who know exactly how much time and effort it takes to do this job and to do it well. And I think over the course of time, you have proven with your commitment and your very direct and inspired style how much you care about what has happened in this district. I think that as we move forward, certainly we all know that your, your love of this city continues and that you'll continue to be involved in a lot of different ways that we will all benefit from. And just, you know, right across the aisle, I'm going to miss having you here. We've had some, some really great, great nights. When you talk about, you know, negotiations and those late-night sessions will not be nearly as entertaining without, without you there to get us through it. And just truly a very respectful and heartfelt thank you for everything you've taught me in this time. And I'm, you know, I look forward, we'll certainly be working together on things in the future. So I don't know if other people would like to speak, and then maybe we can do the presentations.
Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. Regina, first of all, nineteen eighty-six, I think I was a freshman in college, so that's, none of my kids were alive, and Connie was a freshman in college as well, so...
Thanks, Jim. Thanks, appreciate that. Thanks, Jim. Thanks.
And, and you look better today. You look fantastic. I just want to point that out. But I want to thank you as well. We had some good battles, we've had a lot of, a lot of good times as well. Those late-night sessions with negotiations are simply, in a word, unforgettable. Getting out at three-thirty in the morning and, and having a good time getting out at three-thirty in the morning is, is rare. So I wish, I know you'll still be involved, I know you love the city of Lowell and Centerville in particular, so I wish you luck, and I know we'll, we'll hear from you in the future. Thanks.
Mr. Leahy.
Regina, John here. I just wanted to reiterate and say thank you. It's been interesting. You showed me the rope when I got here, and between you and Mr. Golden, when I sat on the other side, we had a good time, we learned a lot, and we did a lot. But thank you very much, and they were questioning the twenty-four years. We go January tenth, so...
Sure.
So, and Jack actually helped me with the years. But thank you again, and the city appreciates what you've given them. Thank you.
Ms. Dougherty.
I'd like to just say good luck and best wishes. I wish you well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just kind of turn the clock back a bit here. Ms. Fattacante, not as far as Mr. Samaras, let's put it that way. I would like to turn it back to twenty-four, twenty-four years, and out of those twenty-four years, you've been my boss for twenty-two. Should we say twenty-two plus, perhaps? And I, I would like to point out, and I think it's extremely important, just to take a couple minutes here, Mr. Mayor, point out some of the important contributions with the various types of votes and backing up certain, certain agendas, which I think was, it's important to, to mention it. You know, going back to nineteen eighty-seven and eighty-eight, we had a tremendous influx of Southeast Asians into our, our system, school system. And during that time, we certainly had a lot of confusion because where are we going to put all these students that we needed to educate? And between nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen eighty-eight, we were registering a hundred-plus students every single week. That's four to five classrooms that we needed to come up with every single week. And Ms. Fattacante was part of that desegregation plan because if we did not do that, the state would have taken over our school system. And I think that was an extremely important, it was a difficult time, very difficult votes. I also want to say that Ms. Fattacante, over those years, certainly has been an advocate of the, of the magnet schools and, which gave increased choices to, to parents. She was also a strong opponent of all-day kindergarten and the early childhood education program, and I think everyone agrees that that's where education, we have to put our, our money into the early childhood, and, and I think Ms. Fattacante certainly realized that at a, at a very young age, being on the school committee. I think that...
(inaudible).
Thank you. I think also something that was very, very important, and you pointed out, I think, a few weeks ago, Mr. Mayor, about going around to the various schools and seeing the deplorable conditions that took place. And going back to nineteen ninety, the Buildings Program, and Ms. Fattacante was right there to support that Buildings Program, which actually, when you think about it, that was twenty-two new schools, new and renovated schools, and that also included a forty-million-dollar renovation at Lowell High School. Ms. Fattacante was part of that, an intricate part of it, and for that, I certainly congratulate her. She also pushed for the Parent Information Center. She realized how important that was. Also a strong supporter and continued right, you know, right to today, a strong supporter of adult education, realizing that, that individuals that did not get that chance, for whatever reason, came up with a second chance. And I think that was, that's something that, there are many people in the, in the city thank her for that. I think also being a strong advocate and proponent of technology. You know, during that time, we had to spend the money, she was there, realizing that technology was important, we had computers in each one of those classes, and that students would, we, we could take the, our students and compete with, with any surrounding towns and cities with this type of aid. And teachers had their computers in the, in the schools also. This was a big part from Ms. Fattacante. And I think also parent involvement. I think that she certainly hasn't been shy, as far as that's concerned, that realizes that parent involvement was extremely important, and that she certainly supported the parents. And just very, and just to conclude here, partnerships, which I have said plenty of times how important they are, Ms. Fattacante, a number of years ago, obviously realized the importance of partnerships with UMass and Middlesex Community College, and, and she was part of that pushing forward professional development when it was perhaps not fashionable. And that was through UMass, UMass Lowell, where we had the, the Center for Field Studies. And she was there for that and backing us up so the teachers could be ready with the most up-to-date information, so to help the students. So for, for these, and these are just a few of the things that, that we jotted, I jotted down here, but for, for these and many other initiatives, I want to thank Ms. Fattacante for her twenty-four years, and, and I know that the city certainly thanks her for it too. Congratulations, Regina.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to come to the podium and offer best wishes to Regina M. Fattacante?
I remember my first meeting.
Excuse me, Regina.
Now, I'm not going to go through all twenty-four years of them, but I remember...
We need suspension.
Oh, my brother. Suspension to the rules to bring my brother forward to say something nice about me.
Second.
I'm Regina's brother, better known as Brother. You know, when our parents were alive at the beginning of her tenure here, they were really proud to see her sit in this seat. And the rest of the family has also been very proud to see how much hard work she's put into this city for the benefit of others. And I just want to stand up here on behalf of them and thank you very much.
If I may, in every new school, in every renovated school, you will see my name on a plaque because I voted for every new school in renovating of new schools. But along with my name, you will see Regina M. Fattacante as well. And you've been there through the tough times and the good times. Regina.
Do I have gifts?
You do have gifts. Let me just say, for anyone who's paying attention, these gifts come to you from your colleagues. We have all pitched in to, to offer you these. The first is our traditional clock, so you'll have so much time on your hands, now you can measure it. So I will, actually, I'm going to ask my colleague to hand that over to you. And then secondly, we did want you to enjoy your time of rest. We did also purchase you the Lowell Public Schools chair, which my colleague, Mr. Leahy, is going to carry because I'm not picking that up.
So much, I was looking for some another piece of furniture in my living room. So much, I was looking for some, another piece of furniture in my living room.
Seeing it takes two of them, that's how well-made it is.
Now, are you going to carry me out in that later? That's so nice. Thank you so much.
Because we all recognized after so many years of service, you needed something really substantial to remember us by.
I can throw more stuff on it when I get it home, thank you very much.
It'll make a great coat rack, like most of the chairs in my house.
Yes, like absolutely most of the stuff in my house, too. As I started to say, I remember my first meeting. You know you could smoke here then? I know, you'd love it, that's why I had to bring it up, that's why I had to bring it up. Dave Allen, Jerry Durkin, myself, George O'Hair, K. Stark closer, and, and George, George Gola Harris. We fought like cats and dogs during the meeting. I brought a huge notebook, I had no idea we had a recording secretary. And after we, after we fought bitterly, George O'Hair came over and says, hey, we're going to the Worthing now. We all drove over to the Worthing, George Gola Harris bought me my first drink, and George O'Hair handed me a pocket knife. The school committee had their own booth on Wednesdays. He said, now you're going to take this knife, and you're going to carve your name on the wall. Along with all the other dozens of school committee people who would carve their name on the wall. And you could see them all, it was absolutely amazing. And I, it, I have seen things here that other people will never see. The good, the bad, the ugly, the absolutely unmentionable. One of my colleagues went into labor during contract negotiations, came back the next day with the baby to finish off the negotiations. One of my colleagues had been vacationing in Florida for the winter, which she did all the time. And the mayor at the time thought that a seat should never remain unfilled, and I, I would agree. So word got back to this person about coming back to reclaim their seat, and they entered the chambers with bags of oranges and grapefruit for the committee. There were some remarkable knock-down, drag-out fights, accompanied by a trip to the Worthing, where we would sit there, and we would fight it out, and we would hammer out an agreement. And we'd come back here at the next meeting, and the problem was solved. I have seen fisticuffs that were pretty interesting in this chambers and outside, because people took their politics, they still take their politics seriously. And you're right, Your Honor, I will have my name on more schools in this city than anybody else will, along with you, because we took some tough votes. And that was a leadership movement of Jimmy Campbell to, to in fact do that. And it was the best decision we could have made, because it gave us something that is not replaceable. It gave kids equal opportunities throughout this whole city. We still have some old schools, and I realize that people like them, but when you walk into those new buildings, and I remember a city councilor once complaining to me that these buildings are like the Taj Mahal. What, what did we spend all this money for? And my response was, we didn't spend enough money because we didn't put preschool classrooms in all of our, in all of our elementary schools. I have had amazing success in this committee, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate my years of service, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I think the legacy that any public official leaves is a legacy to education. And like I pointed out earlier, you can go into the Shaughnessy School, or the Sullivan School, or the McGavinu School, or the Wang School. And those schools are a legacy to you Regina, and your 24 years of service, and that's a nice legacy to have.
If I could, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, if I could, Mr. Mayor. Also traditionally, you know, as this is our last meeting of the term, the committee would like to offer our thanks to you, having served as our mayor for these two years. We appreciate the time and effort that you've put into this endeavor, and it's always good to have one more person on the team. So we appreciate your two years of service here with us, along with all your other mayoral duties. And we did also purchase a clock for you.
Oh wow.
You won't have, you know, as you'll be checking your time in retirement, I'm sure you'll be, you'll appreciate that, thank you, Jim. Thank you very much.
The time on the clock set to 10 because of the 10 o'clock rule? Yeah. Very nice, isn't it?
Thank you very, very much, thank you. If I may, I served as your mayor in 96, 97, and there's one thing that hasn't changed, the subcommittee reports, they're still lengthy as ever. But I'm going to tell you, I enjoyed every minute of every hour of the two-year term. And the thing I enjoyed the most was going to the schools, and whether it was a youngster in the first grade or the sixth grade, the mayor's here, the mayor's here. I tried to let them know, I said, look, I'm just an ordinary guy, I wash my own car, shovel the driveway. But to be the mayor of this great city is, is, it's hard to explain. And the, all the teachers, the administration, and when we had the spotlight of excellence, 30 students would come into these chambers, and I think that was the highlight of my memorial term. And the, I can't say enough about the junior ROTC cadets. They're amazing, and Regina, you must have had a lot to do with that as well. Those students are exceptional. And Chief Master Sergeant Jakes, his staff, has just done an absolute incredible job with these students. And if you attend the Memorial Day services or 911s ceremonies and so forth, you can see that these students, they're not, probably not catching a football for a touchdown, or they're not hitting the game-winning base hit, but they're going out of that high school with a dedication and to a school of higher learning, and they're going to go into the service. And that's remarkable, I applaud you for bringing this program forward, largest in the country. And if you attend the World Series, Opening Day at Elmway Park, how proud you all must be, having those kids come out presenting their colors. It's just, it's, it's, sometimes you're so close to the forest, you can't see the tree. And sometimes we take things for granted. These youngsters are out helping seniors remove the snow from their sidewalks and steps, and there's, there's a few rusty spots in the program this year, but they're working it out, and I thank them for it. And the high school graduations, with all the, the students, the 28 students holding the 28 different flags, it certainly presents a lump in your throat. And there's not another city in this country that can, that can brag about how great this city is. And with that said, as I said last night, it's really not the bricks and the mortar, it's the people that make this city so unique. And I found out out every single day that I was the mayor of this great city. And I attended approximately 425 different functions in this city. And none of them were the same, and I traveled to Worcester, Boston, Ainsbury, met with the governors and mayors of other communities and so forth, and that was the leading question from all of them. Tell me what's so unique about Lowell. How do you do all the things you do? And even with the fiscal crisis that we have, we're developing the Hamilton Canal, new bridge across the Merrimack River, there's so many great things that are happening. And a lot of thanks goes to the Lowell delegation, Senator Panagiotakis, Representative Murphy, Golden and Engel. If you get on the State House, once again, you take things for granted, if you get onto the State House, the respect and admiration they have for the Lowell delegation is absolutely immense. Why do we have all new schools? Why are we getting a new bridge? Why is the Hamilton Canal happening? It's because of leadership and teamwork. And we've had our disagreements, we had one tonight, but that's leadership, and that's good teamwork, working together to come up with solutions and resolutions to make this school district what it is today. And I want to, God bless you, and wish you the best for the 2010, 2011 year. And before I leave this podium, I want to wish everyone a very merry, Merry Christmas, and especially to the Jewish community, very happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, a very prosperous and healthy New Year. With that said, God bless you. Next. Anything else before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Doherty, second, by Mr. Conway. Well, before I leave, I, I forgot something, I want to thank June Carmeau for being so dedicated, taking the minutes of the meetings.
June Sweet.
He doesn't even get, he doesn't even get my name right.
I'm like Dave Carmeau. June Sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't win.